Welcome to November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, Carter County Commissioner. I plan to vent a disaster or you can leave the building, please exit the south entrance along the side. If you do that, go down. This side, please use the steps, not the elevator, and exit to the back of the building. We do have an A D machine on each floor if necessary. Rescind located on the north end of the building on each floor with handicap accessible rooms located on the second. Yes, Commissioner Proffitt and Commissioner Folsom, both called. Okay, there's a fire kind of close to the car, Commissioner Folsom, so he's watching that. There's no changes to the agenda, so if I can have a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Odom, is there any discussion? Ah, it's Odom. We will have opening prayer with Dr. Eka and last by Commissioner.
Al with me. Heavenly Father, as we gather here today, we pause to thank you for this day, for the people we serve, and for this community we're blessed to call home. Lord, we are grateful for the beauty of Carter County, for the mountains that remind us of your strength, the valleys that show you peace, and the people whose kindness and hard work make this place special. In this season of Thanksgiving, help us to remember every good thing comes from you. Thank you for families who love us, friends who support us, and neighbors who care for one another. As we do the work before us today, give us wisdom to lead with fairness, humility, and compassion. Help us to listen well, speak kindly, and seek what's best for those who live here. Lift up those who are struggling, the lonely, the sick, and those facing hard times. May they feel your presence and know that they are not forgotten. Bless those who labor daily for the welfare and safety of our family. We lift up our first responders, our educators, farmers, and public servants. Lord, keep our hearts thankful for not just this season, but for every day. Let gratitude guide our words and action and make everything we do bring honor to you and good to this community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Praise, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two separate meetings, one is for the voter, partials off to the table, ready to move. Motion by Commissioner Ray. She was saying about two persons. Is there any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Brager. All right, the second one is November sixth, official calling. Commissioner Bradley, second. Is there any discussion? All right, thank you. We have approval of none responded. Dwayne McGuinness, Jamie McQueen, Michelle L. Road. President Fraser, and second by Commissioner Kinsley, is there any discussion? Okay, let's go. All right, thank you. We have a presentation from Tri-Cities Airport. I'm sorry, I'm not sure of your last name.
Cassie.
Cassie, okay, Mr. Cassie.
Do you want me to come up this way?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I had to check it up too fast. Okay, we're going to fill District Five vacancy.
Yes, I have a motion to, um, Mayor Breger, fill that vacancy, please.
So, any other motions? Okay, um, if you would like to come and speak, is it permission?
I'm Mayor Breger. I've lived in Carter County for the last thirteen years. I was raised over in Johnson City. We lived over here when I was nine years old, worked basically my whole life. Fifty-seven years old, retired back January first. Worked for P E Healthcare for eighteen years as a field service engineer, working on X-ray machines. Wives, pretty large, two hundred dollars, and one grandson, if I haven't got a son. So, um, I feel like I have a responsibility to get involved in the community. And Rowan asked me if I would be interested, and I said, "Well, I don't know." So, after some thinking about it and thought, well, I did go with it. That's about it. If y'all got any questions for me, I'm not much of a speaker, I'm sorry. If y'all got any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything.
Any questions?
You have a little bit to pay for. So she made the nomination. I was going to make the motion that nominations cease and we elect by acclamation.
So, Commissioner Hughes, say that, so we're going to cease nominations.
And elect by acclamation all at one shot.
All right, is there any discussion? Uh, the second one. Commissioner Cassis, thank you. Mayor Wimpy will congratulate you, congratulations.
Do you solemnly swear that you will perform with fidelity the duties of the office to which you have been appointed and which you are about to assume? Do you solemnly swear to support the constitutions of Tennessee and the United States and to faithfully perform the duties of the office of the county commissioner representing the fifth district of Carter County, Tennessee?
All right, that's it. Yes, this is yours. Congratulations and welcome. You will have to post the. You'll have the voice that.
Talking to everybody.
You'll set up the email tomorrow when you come in. I'm sorry. Not now, I'm sorry. Commissioner Proffitt, Tri-Cities Airport.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I appreciate y'all taking the time to listen to me about the Tri-City Airport. I didn't bring a presentation, actual, for the screen because I knew that they wanted this to be short and you didn't want me to talk for two hours. So I'm going to keep this a little bit on the, just brief side, filling in on the Tri-City Airport, who I am, what the airport's doing right now, and kind of trying to change things going forward in the future. Most of all, when I do these type of things, though, I like it to be a conversation. So if you have any questions for me, feel free to let me know, raise your hand, throw something at me, whatever you want. And I'm happy to answer any of the questions you may have. So I am Gene Casse. I'm the president and CEO of the Tri-City Airport Authority. I've been with the Tri-City Airport now just a little under seven years. I've got a lengthy background in running airports. I've been working at airports in one way or another since I was about nineteen years old. So that's a long time. I can't even do that much math. I most recently came before here, came from the University of Illinois, where I ran the Willard Airport in central Illinois. Before that, I was in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. Prior to that, I was in the Cincinnati area, running airside operations at the Cincinnati Northern Kentucky International Airport. And where I started my career and where I was for about twenty-two years was on the Oregon coast, running airports out there. So I've been around for a long time in airports, got a lot of background in what we do. The Tri-City Airport has been around since about the early nineteen thirties, and it has historically been supported by and serving the original designations of the Tri-Cities. So Washington and Sullivan County, Kingsport, Bristols, the two Bristols, Johnson City, and that area. Around, now, it's going on about, uh, about close to fifteen years ago now, the three cities or the four cities and the two counties got together and formed an airport authority under state law. It was an interesting form of, how to form that government, because it does include the city of Bristol, Virginia. So it's a, it's an authority that covers two states to a certain extent. And we've done a lot since then to try to grow and modernize the airport. As I said, I've been there for about seven years now. And since I've been there, we've really been focused on our three core missions, which are industrial aviation side of things. So many of you have probably heard about Aerospace Park. That's been a project that's been being worked on for probably a good twenty-five to thirty years in getting the southwest side of the airport. Actually, that's going to be more of the southeast side. I always forget which way the airport's tilted. Southeast side of the airport, getting ready for industrial development with jobs and industries that are focused on aviation and aeronautical type work. About eight years ago, a little more than that, maybe ten years ago, Sullivan County, Washington County, Bristol, Tennessee, Kingsport, and Johnson City got together and put in the last twelve million dollars to finish out that project. We finished it right in the middle of COVID, which was not that great because the aviation economy went really negative in the COVID timeframe. So we are still working on that, being one of our core missions, is trying to develop that for more jobs and more growth. The other place where we're trying to grow and try to change is the general aviation side of things. And when we talk about general aviation out at the Tri-City Airport, what we're really talking about and focusing on is meeting the needs of everyone who operates aircraft non-commercially. So you don't sell tickets for it. So that's the business aircraft, that's corporate aircraft. But it's also the small pilot who flies their own aircraft, either for business or for fun. And we're doing a lot of things for that. We're trying to develop property where we can develop more of that. We're trying to develop a more business-friendly environment. We're taking over the operations of the fixed base operator so we can provide a better opportunity for growth. And we're just trying to continue to grow the airport in that direction. And the third area, which I think is most important, everybody that lives in our region, that we're really trying to grow, is in airline service. Since I've been here for the last seven years, we've made a lot of headway in increasing the number of seats that we have in our market. So when we talk about what we have available, we talk about the number of seats in the market, and that is literally how many seats are flying in and out every day. Whether that's in handful of big aircraft or the smaller forty-seat aircraft, what we want is more seats going to more destinations. So since I've been here, we've added Dallas Fort Worth. And recently, you may have heard, we've added the flights with Breeze Airways going to Orlando and Dulles. Those would be every, those would be twice a week to each route. Those are both exceptional. And I think one of the main reasons I'm here to, like Mayor Wimpy, was at one of our announcements and one of our conversations about this. And one of the main reasons I'm here tonight is because of the effort that was done at a regional basis to make that Breeze flight happen and make it available. And amongst all of those three things that I've talked about, where we're really trying to support growth and support the community in industrial aviation, general aviation, and commercial aviation, is growing our footprint. So I explained who traditionally the Tri-Cities is and how the Tri-Cities Airport is. We recognized when I got here that the airport represents much more than that original area that was identified as Tri-Cities. We represent Carter County, we represent Hawkins County, we represent places further up into Virginia and further into North Carolina. And we're trying to figure out how we serve the needs of everybody. Even if you're not in our traditional area and you're not on our authority board, we still want to represent you and we still want to be here and be a part of your community and part of your growth. We think, and I know Mayor Wimpy thinks, that if we are more successful with growing things like the Breeze Airlines, getting more Allegiant flights, getting more destinations on American and Delta, and maybe even someday United, that benefits everybody for bringing more people into the area, bringing more growth into the area. And so that's why we're here, and that's why I'm here speaking to you, is to let you know what we're doing, make sure you understand what the Tri-City Airport is doing and how we're focusing on that growth of who we represent, and make sure it includes you and Carter County. Ask how we can help you, if you know how you can help us. We can't all do this by ourselves. That's why it's so important and why I know you all have considered, and I think maybe have even worked on, supporting Bridge and their efforts with Breeze Airways. And I know you've been involved with the Northeast Tourism Group. We all recognize that to grow and to make all of our areas better, we need to work together. And that's really the focus we've been on. Well, I know since I've been at the Tri-City Airport, and it's the way we're going to continue to go. And we want to make sure we can help you in any of those ways. We think your tourism market here is amazing. You guys have some great businesses out here that depend on the airport. And we just really want to help keep that growing for you. So a lot of what I want to do is just make sure you know we're here for you, make sure you know who I am. If you have anything for me directly that you want to talk to me about, I said I'll take questions now. You can get ahold of me later. I am real easy to find. Just Google Gene Casse, and you will know pretty much everything about me you want to know. I don't have a private life, but doesn't. So just feel free to reach out, ask me any questions. You can ask me questions now. Like I said, I didn't want to come here and take a lot of your time. Like, seriously, I've got a presentation that I could talk to about two and a half hours if necessary. And you ever want to really dive deep into what we do. But again, we're here to help you. We're here to figure out how to continue growing, and going, our partnership with all the region so that we can all help each other build a lot, a lot better when it comes to aviation, transportation, tourism, and all the growth that we can help you support.
Is there any questions?
Have you guys looked at, I know you may not be able to talk about this. Are there other airlines that are in the pipeline for coming to Tri-City? I know that at one point there was a discussion regarding Southwest.
Southwest.
Things was.
So yeah, Southwest is always, we're always talking to Southwest. Actually, I just went to a meeting a week ago where I, I didn't have an official meeting with Southwest, but I got him in the corner on one of the reception nights and talked to him for about thirty-five minutes. One of the challenges with Southwest is they have historically not went into markets that are less than a million people and can't support more than six flights or less than six flights a day. They are recently changing their business model. And with what they're doing, going in with a lot of flights into Knoxville, they're, they're thinking about changing their business model and actually looking at our type of community, not specifically us, but our type of community, and looking at maybe two flights a day and things like that where they change their business model. If that happens, it'd be a tremendous opportunity for us, but they, they need to change their business model. The other things that we've been working on, we have, a few years ago, we applied for the Small Community Air Service Development Program grant, and we got about a million dollars plus community match, about another four hundred thousand. So we got a little under a million and a half dollars to help provide incentives to a Chicago route. That is still active. It's, raising that grant was great. It was very successful. That is still active, and we are talking with three airlines about routes into Chicago. Those would be daily flights, probably a minimum two times a day, maybe more than that. And well, again, we have three airlines we're talking to about that. So there's a lot that we're continuing to work on. Unfortunately, we don't get to go tell the airlines what to do. We just have to go present our case and hope that they choose us over the airport down the road. Speaking of which, stop, stop driving to the airport down the road. Far more people who want to fly in and out of our area than we have seats that fly out of our area. So at some point, you have to go to the airport down the road. But if you stop going to the airport, those airlines will start putting flights into our region and our airport. So as much as you can, always choose Tri-Cities first, and that will help us tremendously.
And I've got one other question, if you want to hear me. What is the largest flight that you can land at Tri-City's region, like seven thirty-sevens, seven forty-sevens?
Well, we regularly bring in seven thirty-sevens, Allegiant flies seven thirty-sevens, and a couple other airlines will occasionally fly in Airbus three twenties. Breeze is going to fly two twenties, which are pretty large aircraft. The airport's big enough to land seven forty-sevens and seven seven-sevens. We just aren't going to fill those up with passengers. So the aircraft that we ideally look at is the, the aircraft in, that are around a hundred and, well, anywhere from around seventy-five to a hundred and twenty seats. So those are kind of the ideal size for us. But some of the less than daily, so Allegiant, Breeze aircraft, they can support larger aircraft, and those are the seven thirty-sevens and other aircraft such as that. We can easily support them. And again, we could fill up bigger aircraft, or we could land bigger aircraft if we can fill them up.
All right, thanks for, you mentioned Allegiant fly in and out of there. Wanting us to ride down the road to another airport.
Allegiant wants you to. I don't want you to.
See, Allegiant, if they cut their fare in here, we get a lot of people to drive to Asheville. It's an hour drive there, hour and a half to Asheville, but a fifty-dollar fare each way, you're going, they'll take that extra half hour.
Absolutely. We understand that. Again, Allegiant sets their price. We don't have any control over that, but we do tell them that message every time we talk to them. But again, and, and I, I say this kind of tongue-in-cheek, stop driving down the road. But in all seriousness, if you did, they would get the message.
I know a lot of people that fly in and out of Florida from this area, and they all ride to Asheville because it's cheaper.
I, I totally get that. And again, while I, while I say that out loud, I really can't blame them. I just, if, as much as they can stop doing it, it will help us. It would get Allegiant's attention more than me telling them that they should stop doing it.
And I was going to add on to just what Mr. Wim said. By adding Breeze, that does put pressure on Allegiant to drop their flight rates to be competitive with Breeze.
Absolutely.
Especially over what, two, three years, that sort of thing, because Breeze can come in and get their rates down and really pull Allegiant down. So us getting Breeze is a really big, is a really big step in the right direction because it puts pressure on Allegiant.
And it keeps pressure on Breeze to perform. Absolutely. And I mentioned that we have far more people that want to fly in and out of here than we have seats. So we're not worried at all that Breeze is going to just cause Allegiant to want to leave. We're, we think it's just going to cause Allegiant to want to compete even more.
Any questions?
Again, I'm very easy to find and easy to get ahold of. I know the mayor knows how to reach out to me. Just if you have any questions you want to ask, feel free to email me, and we'll give those answers to you as quickly as possible. Thank you very much for having me here.
Thank you. Your financial statements are in your packet as usual. Also, your emergency spend report is in there as well. If you need any additional information on that or have any concerns about that, please let me know. I will let you know a couple of items. We will be requesting additional funds this week for things that we have actually spent. We're not taking anything on estimates at this point. We're doing only on actuals. And these will be for the first three projects that were obligated. We are working on the Second Amendment, which includes the next eight projects. It's still at step four. They've been a little slow to get moving on that, but hopefully that will move through quickly. That's where we'll see a much more significant ask as to what we can pull down at that point. We have, so as I said, eight more projects obligated. We have several that are on the edge of being obligated. One of those projects is the first CAT Z project. We are one step away from obligation on that one. So as soon as that gets obligated, then we'll put that into the queue as well. That is based on actual cost for the temporary bridges, I mean, for the, yeah, for the temporary bridges and P O G one, P O G two engineering. Any questions?
Yeah, one. Well, it's actually came into the county from the.
The same amount that has. We're getting ready to request the next because right now we only have the three projects that we are able to pull money down on. As soon as this next eight projects gets through on the First Amendment, then we'll be able to pull a significant amount down at that point. But that's up to the state. We don't have any control over that.
That's three hundred and sixty-one thousand is what we're up with, by his count.
Yes. We cannot request anything more than what, right now, I'm going to be requesting three hundred and fifteen. We cannot request anything more than what, right now I'm going to be requesting 315,000 plus, which is all I can request for actuals at this time, but until the First Amendment runs through that full process with the state, I can't ask for anything additional, but I have it ready as soon as that's at a point where we can request the funds, then that, that request will be well over a million dollars. Any other questions?
I don't have anything to report, we had planned to introduce the new child plan tonight, but Trevor is currently with Elton Mills Volunteer Fire Department on this fire that they are at, so we'll try to get his introduction in next month.
As the parent was often directed, we've got a lot moving forward, getting better for obligation. So we have 43 projects in total, a lot of them are pending Q and A review, peer review, still the cost, but we've got a total out of that 43 of 12 obligated projects, and that will be, will draw down the funds as lots of them are explained. We are still working with long-term on a weekly, bi-weekly basis for any residents that have, still have sustained damage from COVID-19, we are deferring it to long-term. Disaster-wise, one of the things that was important is getting that information out to our residents of the county as quickly as possible. In, we've been notified by the, our app, which is the same application company that designed the Sheriff's App for them, we will be getting a press release promo kit together. Our Elizabethan Carter County EMA app is live on the Apple Store and then the Play Store, download them. Since they've gone live, I myself have got four notifications for weather, and that they're coming out at the same time that the weather service is putting them out, we're getting that out. So I would encourage commissioners at this time to check the Play Stores out, and the app. All the information for county offices as well as city offices are on that app as well, and I believe it's going to be an overall resource for our residents.
What did you say about that app possibly?
It is actually the Elizabethan Carter County EMA, and then we'll have the same logo as our EMA office when you go to the App Store. It is a free app. With this app, through the development, we felt it was very important, we have both electric companies, links to them, residents can link up to even submit damage reports. They can't get phone call or can't get in contact with any of the county and/or city officials, they can submit a damage report, that report will go to my office and I will make sure that it goes to the right proper channel.
Any questions?
I got one. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Johnson. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Somebody go.
I just wanted to ask about the weather station.
The, okay, the Mezzonet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, at the directors' meeting, that was actually the first I had heard about it. Every county throughout the state of New Jersey through TEMA is slated to receive one weather station. The requirements are a 30 by 30 piece of property, right now they have identified, I want to say either six or seven, last time I looked at the map, of federal and/or state land in Carter County for possible locations for that. They will be coming out to each county to meet with the commissioners and to finalize where would be the best place. They did recommend that we try to avoid any areas with a lot of population, such as like in the city of Elizabethan, because there's too much interference from that. That Mezzonet would be accessible not only to county management and for TEMA, but for the general public. National Weather Service would also utilize that as part of their reporting stations. I know one particular place that they were looking up is up on Roan Mountain, I believe behind the, yeah, there, the outpatient facility, so that, that's one of the identified spots that I believe in, I believe that because it's federal and state land back there.
Mr. Johnson?
May I, Mr.? Hazard mitigation grant, I know you and I had spoke about it.
Yes.
For this month, but there's some citizens that has the question, and I thought we'd get it out in public.
Absolutely.
It's, it'd be submitted in December, is that correct, what you was told?
Yes.
Second was, they're all concerned, the expedition of a warning system, the sirens that want to hear in the community and all that, is that going to be included in the mitigation grant?
That's, that application has already been put in for that.
Already been for.
So on, on full disclosure, with, out of Hurricane Lee prior to, starting here, we came into the hazards mitigation program, which is a program that FEMA designs post any disaster, and it identifies certain needs that would enhance the safety and resiliency to a community. Items that can be applied for are stationary generators, warning signs, Starlinks. There was a list that was submitted by my predecessor, Mr. Winters, to the state of what Carter County would like to see put in. I can tell you that this is not guaranteed we're going to get these items, however, all the applications, all the pictures, all the paperwork have been put in for the, a countywide sirens have, fire, firehouses have sirens at each of their locations, stationary generators, not only for here at the courthouse, but for all the fire departments. We are also working on a safe room and additional possibility of a DOC with that. Again, this, this is almost a big county-wide wish list. All the applications have been submitted, the deadline was by September 28th, I believe. They had so much put in and were overwhelmed that they extended the deadline for applications until December. So once that, once they closed the applications, we have received instructions that we have to post this on the county website for full disclosure and put out what we actually sent applications. We also put in for weather radios, Starlinks, to enhance our preparedness for the county.
Thank you. We got one question, and the county match for that is 20%.
It's the 12.5, and that, I believe, was already, hasn't already been secured, pretty signed for that. So it, it goes along with some of the reimbursements, the 75, 25.
So that matches TEMA, 12 and 1/8, Feds 75, and that's 12 and 1/8.
Yes. Any other questions? Thank you. Have the comments, as always, you'll have five minutes. Have the comments, anyone? We need to take a 10-minute break.
I don't know if you're giving it to you.
Budget, it's supposed to be a long one, that's why, I hate, I hate to handle it.
Yeah, we can always get up and leave, not risk Carter.
It was, it was nice getting a 10-minute break.
Make ice chips, that's better.
Watch out, this is really good, I got chips.
You have to, you have to, when you go into 1011, you don't tell your 10.
You're in there in that lamp.
I'm sure I got you.
But I, it's important to have a safety.
We've been building a procedural for.
Then they had about the, my dad.
You know.
It's a little weird, they, they get Charlotte.
Let's take it a bit higher.
They just, 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 they
He scared me. Is he okay? How can we tell?
Maybe you're paying something.
Is Mr. Prophet coming back? I don't know. If he does, I guess great. Great. Okay, so we also have a second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any discussion?
Yes, are we on number one?
Yes, we are.
Yes. I understand there was some changes because of that. Is this the one where we made a motion?
Yes, this is the motion and then when we, we were relaying, you relayed to me, I relayed to her and then it was noisy. And we, all we really did was circle back and land in the same spot we were. So this should correct that, we should be back to free to lean, uh, policies and procedures. And this will be this where Shannon needed to stay. And, and the motion that we needed that, so.
No, this one ju- this says for everything, this is not just saying the highway department, correct?
There was very few things that are left, um, other than hallway, so. That was, you know, actually it was four things.
Yes, great.
Is there any other extension?
Could you?
Okay, let's go. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Wayne, did you have something?
I'm sorry. I, I must have just.
Okay.
You need a burger.
All right, I'll just go. Here we have someone. There he is. I'm going to roll this lighting on you, sorry, keep your glasses with your presence.
Put him in the corner chair, might give him some.
Yes, put him in the corner.
I got locked down the restroom with this guy. I need you.
It's a bridge or she needed for main instead of you. Are you abstaining? I don't think he can hear you. Yes, sure. Well, I have to be most, um.
Voice.
Oh. So yes. Uh, you said, you said yes. She tried X-ing out and then resigning again.
Pardon?
She tried X-ing out and then resigning.
Playmate.
O E M, um.
Can you?
I know he can't.
Sure, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Okay. But, uh, like, prefer to do both in case, if not. Thank you. Motion passed. Number two is motion to approve the matter and decree contract from the White Rock Tower Site access road engineering services at an amount not to exceed eighty-one thousand with funds coming from excess ARP funds that were previously committed to the admin base. Second by Commissioner Fraser, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Okay, thank you, motion passed. Number three is a motion to appropriate funds in the amount of one million for the purchase of a building to be used by the E.T. Extension Office for two hundred and eighty-two thousand to come from the sports betting tax reserves and seven hundred and eighteen thousand coming from the capital projects reserves. Second by Commissioner Fraser, is there any discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. Thank you, motion passed. Four is a motion to approve the R.K.K. addendum to provide construction, engineering, inspection services and support services for the bridge repair project at Long Hollow Road over Waverly for an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars with funds to be paid during the bond proceeds for flood-related road projects. Second by Commissioner Smith, is there any discussion?
On the. I'm sorry. This man on this page, second page, says one forty-seven, three oh nine. What, what's the difference? On our agenda says one forty-seven, five, and on here it says one forty-seven, three, excuse me, three oh nine. Second page.
On the second.
On the bottom, Dennis, says, uh, proposed one thirty-seven, three oh nine seventeen. On our agenda, it says one forty-seven, five hundred.
It's not to exceed.
It's not to exceed. It's not to exceed, so like a couple of dollars over in case there's some ground or something.
I thought we just got, I thought we got numbers wrong.
Sorry.
My.
That's still up. Are you stuck? All right.
Well.
Richard. Okay, good. Mr. Taylor. Okay, but you want to pass? Number five is motion to authorize the landfill to purchase at two thousand and twenty-seven year two fifty for drive through five million, fifty thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. With, with twenty-one thousand coming from the proceeds from the sale of the items on good deals and the remaining balance coming from solid waste and the sun fund balance. Hold on just a second. Just a second. Second by Commissioner. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. And I should pass.
He, he already had a commitment. He had a commitment that he had to do at seven. He wasn't aware that he was going to be installed tonight and that he would be here. So.
I've got a commitment, I go.
You already can light your ear. Number three is motion to authorize the sheriff's office to purchase a van to be used by the jail staff for training transportation in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars with funds coming from the sheriff's commissary reserve account. Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Okay, thank you, motion passed. Number seven is a motion to approve payment to pay for construction for heat and branch repairs application number five in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-three cents for bank stabilization to be reimbursed back in our CS. A PO has been approved for this vendor. Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed. All right, number eight is a motion to approve a check request and payment to E.C.E. for invoice number twenty-one eighty-eight in the amount of six thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty cents for an H.H. study for dark bridge roads, five M, funds to be paid for bond proceeds for flood-related road projects. Second by Commissioner Fraser, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you. Motion passed. Number nine is a motion to approve payment to landmarks for invoice number two zero two five zero five four zero in the amount of five thousand six hundred dollars for P.O. temporary bridge one. A PO has been approved for this vendor. Second by Commissioner Range, is there any discussion? All right, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed. Number ten is a motion to approve payment to landmarks for invoice number two zero two five zero five four one in the amount of five thousand six hundred dollars for P.O. temporary bridge two. A PO has been approved for this vendor. Second by Commissioner Thomas, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed. All right, number eleven is a motion to approve a check request and payment to Shouse Professional Services for invoice number one zero one one two five in the amount of one thousand two hundred dollars. Second by Commissioner Fraser, is there any discussion? Motion passed, I mean, vote. Okay, thank you, motion passed. All right, number twelve is motion to approve a check request and payment to Shouse Professional Services for revised invoice number one zero one zero two five dash V two in the amount of forty-six thousand nine hundred and five dollars and sixty-two cents. Second by Commissioner Fraser, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Well. Need to flip my vote.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Okay, thank you, motion passed. All right, number thirteen is a motion to approve a PO to Summerson Taylor in the amount of nine hundred and five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for heating and breathe for repairs. Second by Commissioner Prophet. Is there any discussion? I wasn't lying by.
It's fine.
Sorry.
No, it's fine.
We figured.
Okay, now, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed. All right, number fourteen is a motion to approve a PO to Summerson Taylor in the amount of six hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars for heat and breathe for repairs. Second by Commissioner Williams, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed. All right, number fifteen is a motion to approve a PO to Bakers Construction Services in the amount of seven hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and sixty dollars for Laurel Hollow Road repairs. Second by Commissioner Thomas, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed. All right, number sixteen is a motion to approve a PO to Bakers Construction in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand fifty-four dollars for Perkins Hollow Road repairs. Second by Commissioner Williams, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed. Number seventeen is a motion to approve a PO to Bakers Construction Services in the amount of eight hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty cents for Long Hollow Road repairs. Second by Commissioner Hughes, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed. Eighteen is a motion to approve heat and fun budget amendment one one dash five, items one through fourteen, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-two cents with ninety-eight thousand one hundred and two dollars coming from reserve accounts and nothing coming from the Ensign Fund Balance. Second by Commissioner Williams, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed. Number ten is a motion to approve solid waste fund budget amendment one sixteen dash three, items one through five, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents with nothing coming from reserve accounts and a hundred and thirty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents coming from solid waste fund balance. Second by Commissioner Prophet, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed. Twenty is motion to approve highway fund budget amendment one thirty-one dash three, items one and two, in the amount of five thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars with nothing coming from reserve accounts and four thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars coming from the highway department's fund balance. Second by Commissioner Fraser, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed. All right, twenty-one is a motion to approve general purpose school fund budget amendment one forty-one dash four, items one and two, in the amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars with nothing coming from reserve accounts and nothing coming from the Ensign Fund Balance. Second by Commissioner Oden, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed. Twenty-two is a motion to approve the lean bond fund budget amendment one eighty dash three, item one, in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-three cents with nothing coming from reserve accounts and nothing coming from the Ensign Fund Balance. Second by Commissioner Oden, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passed, thank you. Twenty-three is a motion to approve the annual shelter and monetary donations in the amount of four thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Second by Commissioner Williams, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed. Twenty-four is a motion to approve the animal shelter non-monetary donations totaling $225.
Second by Commissioner. Second by Commissioner Crawford, is there any discussion?
Okay, let's vote. Anything new?
Thank you, motion passed. Thank you, is there any questions?
Evening, folks. Number one that's listed under there, under building and grounds, we're not to that point yet, if I'm not mistaken, Attorney Hardin, that was, we were just exploring the contract at that, building and grounds. Did you see the motion that's listed in there?
Yeah, they appropriated the money. It's not what's to offer with the contract that's in the paper.
All right.
What have they been waiting for, the appraisal?
They need appraisal. It's built into the contract.
The contract has a contingency period. They said ninety days. It actually went a little bit over ninety days, till the date after the March issue meeting, in which to get the inspection and the appraisal, whatever other contingencies you want to address during that period, you can cancel it for any reason up until that day.
All right, so put it in the form of a motion to formally offer the sum of $1 million for the purchase of the improved real property located at 129 Judge Ben Allen, Judge Don Lewis Boulevard, and approve the terms of the purchase contract to be submitted to EPRT Properties LLC.
Second by Commissioner Williams, is there any discussion?
I will say, before you look, I finished the title search on the property today. I didn't find anything of great concern. There is a lease in effect right now, but I think the party's intent or will cancel that lease. I think it was for the storage of the items that were in there, but that ceased now. So it's actually in effect until 2038. It was a twenty-year lease. So that's really the only thing. The property actually was deeded to Carter County by Great Lakes Research Corporation back in the nineties. And since then, it's been due through these different entities. There's some easements, there's part of it was conveyed to Elizabeth Electric, part of it was conveyed to the state, on two separate occasions. So the only real that I have from a title standpoint, I think it needs a survey. It's been carved up out of lots of parcels multiple times. And although the current legal description references a survey, it's not been recorded and I don't have it. So other than that, you know, I don't find any other areas of concern with the property from a title standpoint. Obviously, the inspection and appraisal are totally separate issues.
Is there any questions?
One of those concerns addressed in the contract, if you find something.
That's the contingency area half within the contract, yes, ma'am.
I thought so, but I just wanted to get legal.
Any other questions?
Okay, let's vote.
Thank you, guys. Next up is a motion to permit First Tennessee Development District to issue an RFQ for engineering services relating to the restoration of Eric Anderson Park on ARC grant with no county match required.
Thank you, motion passed.
Bye-bye, Valance.
All right, FMC, we met on November 6th, and so the following items will be recommended for approval from the committee, a motion and a second from the floor, since I'm not a voting member and I'm the chair of the FMC.
So moved.
Well, let me read the first one. The first one is, we'll need a motion to approve the purchase order to Farm Supply Company in the amount of $9,199.20 for the Run Mountain Recreation Foundation to purchase a series sixty-inch mower to be paid from the current Parks and Recreation budget.
Motion by Commissioner Frager, second by Commissioner Smith, is there any discussion?
Yes. I've got a couple of questions on this one. So, we're in November, we're not doing a lot of mowing, so, two questions. It's why we're purchasing the mower, is it, I mean, we're not going to be mowing up there right now. Still restoring that park, aren't we?
We are. I'll allow Commissioner Frager.
So the park is in not shape to mow, and we're spending $9,000 on a lawnmower. To me, I just think it's, you know, not the right timing to spend that. I mean, there may be something else that they could need here in the immediate future to spend that money on. And $9,000 for lawnmowers, that's Daddy Rabbit, that's top of the line.
Commissioner Frager, liaison, would you?
The mower, this actually started back in the summer, getting the mower purchased, and the original mower that had been selected was basically just slightly above what you would use at home. This is a professional series mower. It'll be replacing other mowers that are already in place up there. It's a zero, if I'm not mistaken, it's a zero-turn, zero-turn mower, and it's got to be purchased for them. They're going to have to start maintaining the parks starting in the spring. Wouldn't it get knocked out now? That way it's onsite, ready to go, for whenever the spring opens up.
There is still probably a third of Eric Anderson Park behind the post office that does get mowed. It was mowed last week if I remember correctly. But it does need mowing up there, even sometimes during the wintertime, that grass does grow. If you wait till spring to do it instead, when you get a warm spot in the middle of winter, you're going to have eighteen inches of grass to mow down. That's harder on the mower than mowing.
I just think they're wanting to get ahead of it, get prepared for the next mowing season.
Is there any questions? Discussion?
Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
The second one is a motion to approve the 2026 Carter County holiday schedule with additional dates due to the election days. Need a motion?
A motion by Mr. Frager, second by Commissioner Range, is there any discussion? All right, everybody look over.
Third one is a motion to approve the grant contract between the State of Tennessee, Tennessee Emergency Management Agency and Carter County for the provision of the Governor's Response and Recovery Fund for bond administration fees in the amount of $398,557. And that's for the reimbursement of the admin fees on the grant, the $40 million grant.
Motion made by Commissioner Frager, second by Commissioner Williams, is there any discussion?
Okay, let's vote.
I know he is, but it's not allowing screen to it.
Thank you, motion passed.
For a motion to approve a grant contract between the State of Tennessee Department of Military, Department of Military Tennessee Emergency Management Agency in Carter County for the provision of the Hailing Interest Payment Fund for interest payment reimbursements in the amount of $5,497,650. That is for reimbursement on the interest from the bond.
Question? Backed by Commissioner Frager, second by Commissioner Thomas, is there any discussion?
Okay, let's vote. Somebody have one minute? Don't forget. Don't forget, you have to show that first question. All right, thank you, motion passed.
Motion to approve the request to declare county's property a surplus from the School Transportation Department for disposal of forty-six vehicles dated June 11, 2025.
Motion made by Commissioner Frager, second by Commissioner Range, is there any discussion?
Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
Motion to approve the request to declare county property a surplus from Happy Valley Elementary School for multiple items dated July 31, 2025.
Motion by Commissioner Frager, second by Commissioner Williams, is there any discussion?
Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
Motion to approve the request to declare county property a surplus from EMA for twenty-four items dated October 30, 2025.
Second by Commissioner Frager, second by Commissioner Thomas, is there any discussion?
Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
Motion to approve the request to declare county's property a surplus from the Finance Department for two items dated September 12, 2025.
Motion by Commissioner Frager, second by Commissioner Smith, is there any discussion?
Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
Motion to approve the request to declare county property a surplus property from the Highway Department for two items dated August 25, 2025, one item dated September 4, 2025.
Motion by Commissioner Frager, second by Commissioner Williams, is there any discussion?
Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
Motion to approve the request to declare county property a surplus from the Register of Deeds Office for two items dated October 2, 2025.
Motion by Commissioner Frager, second by Commissioner Thomas, is there any discussion?
Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
Approve the property transfer notification form dated August 5, 2025, transferring a 2005 Jeep Cherokee from the Maintenance Department to the Planning Department.
Motion by Commissioner Frager, second by Commissioner Ken, is there any discussion?
Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
Approve the property transfer notification form dated September 18, 2025, transferring a 2025 cargo van from the county to Loaves and Fishes. This was purchased through the Food and Security Grant and administered by the First Tennessee Development Agency.
Motion by Commissioner Frager, second by Commissioner Ken, is there any discussion?
Okay, let's vote. Motion passed, thank you.
Approve the property transfer notification form dated September 18, 2025, transferring a 2025 two-penny super cab from the county to ARM. This was the purchase that was made through the Food and Security Grant and administered by the First Tennessee Development.
Motion by Commissioner Frager, second by Commissioner Hughes, is there any discussion?
Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve, I'll make a motion to approve, MOU with TDOC for installation of school zone lights on Route 91 at Hunter Elementary.
Second by Commissioner Frager, is there any discussion?
Okay, let's vote.
And I've got one other thing, Sean's going to add.
I don't know if anybody knows, but TDOC inspects all of our bridges, every bridge we have, it's over to me and somebody. You have to do what they say. If they say close it, you've got fourteen days to close it. How you get in or out? The, we call it the Freesland Bridge, it's called the Hensor graveyard cemetery bridge, Stone Creek. Tried to close it last year, and they give you some options. You can mandate it to be better within that last year, and now they inspected the other day, they give us seven days to close it. That was winced, last Wednesday. You don't close it, you're out of compliance with all your regulations for state. There's four families that's in behind that bridge. If I close it, they've got no way in or out at all. TDOC thinks you can just park one vehicle on one side, one on the other, and they can walk in. So our hands are tied. Luke from EMA went through and got contact with the Landworks, the temporary bridge is in Poga, the two temporaries, and we're going to have to get a temporary, rent a temporary bridge to put on the upper side of this bridge so we can get it built, replaced. We've got to get money from the Ensign Fund balance to rent this.
How long, how long will it take, bridge?
The one bridge is in our ass, fifty-one feet long.
How much?
Fifty-one.
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 Yeah, what, what did you say?
It's called the Hensor Cemetery Road Bridge. We call it the Freesland Bridge, but it's called the Hensor Cemetery. I'm sorry, Creek.
With one that size, what is the normal procedure? Do we go on it in contract with an AE for engineer design?
It's one of our, now that's in the twenty, what TDOC's got for the bridge improvement grant, that we're waiting on through the federal. It's one of those twin, but it kind of got stopped when the government shut down. I talked with TDOC, Patty's talked with TDOC, they will not let us leave it open any longer. They said we have to close it immediately. I talked with the guys from the engineering on the bridge, he's supposed to be here Wednesday to look at it. He told me we're probably looking at fourteen days before they can get here. It's the same setup and everything that we've got on the Poga bridges, except where those ridges, the ridges, it'll be two bridges side by side, just like it was.
But you don't put a temporary in, they can put that in, because they're shut down, can move.
Four houses and then a large cemetery, too.
Yeah, and that's far trucks, anything, it's far truck, because we're in the ass, got five tons of them. But, Sharon might explain better, we had to put in for two POs, one for rent the bridge to get it here, and the other one's the rental for twenty bridge to get it here, and the other one's the rental for twenty-eight months. Four hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-four cents.
Is there, how long are those other temp, those other two temporary bridges going to be used?
Well, two years, not three. We just got the engineering everything back, it's leaving it up for video. This one, well, with this one, we could be looking at two years, maybe less. Lisa from T-Doc that works with us, and Matt and Craig, they sent me this today, she wanted to say the message, if Lisa can get to T-Doc and view the plans quickly, no problems, utilities to the properties, leasing, get the funding, there's probably a good possibility to collect, be in February, construction can start in March, we don't have any problems. That's pretty quick.
Where's the money coming from?
On time fund balance, is that right, Karen?
Highways on the time fund balance, not healing.
Highways on the time fund balance.
So, just exactly how long are we going to have these four families walking home in basically in winter?
Fourteen days, fourteen days, two weeks.
We get to Wednesday, looks at it, it's, you're looking at a fourteen-day turnaround. It's public, well, Thanksgiving, holidays. As of now, the bridge is not closed.
Right, but is there not some way that we can work with the T-Doc to get these?
I've been on the phone with them today, and they've done said we're already past the seven days, and if we don't get it closed, all state funding stops to Carter County.
Most time they give you fourteen days. This is in bad shape.
It was technically being closed already.
And that's like the rest of the twenty bridges we've got, they're all on quarters. I'm not pissing the boat, but being, I think we've worked on bridges, it was, I don't know, Jeff Burns or something else, and they, and they, and they, Matt's called us, or it's called me.
They don't hold.
Mr. Deal?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve the monies to come from the highways unassigned fund balance to lease the bridge until the other bridge can be repaired.
I'll second that. Technically, yes, it is.
I want my motion, always says something. Okay, we actually have a second.
Second.
A second is the deal, so I mean, goes to, to agree to.
Motion back for me.
Thank you, motion, we said something. A motion is to have a deal. Now, I'll take it. What's the motion? I don't understand what's going on here. Inside the rules.
I see any discussion, sustaining the rules. Okay, let's go. Thank you, motion passed, just sustaining the rules. Do you want to go with your motion?
Yes, I do. I'll make a motion to lease the bridge. These are graveyard bridge. To the length of the construction job on the original bridge, to prepare. You come out of the unassigned highway, unassigned fund balance.
And need a specific amount, or not to exceed, or?
Not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And this is installation, and them coming back and taking it back out, it's all one month, plus the rent for the twenty-eight months.
Let's give our second to type it in. Second.
Is that correct? Mr. Deal?
Four hundred and fifty, not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Motion to lease the temporary bridge, with the length of construction of the new Hensher Cemetery Road Bridge. Say, motion, motion to lease the temporary bridge, with the length of construction of the new Hensher Cemetery Road Bridge.
Are you arguing? Friesland Road now, does that matter? We know it is Hensher Cemetery, but it's actually labeled as Friesland Road. It's slash, I didn't, I didn't know if it was.
T-Doc's got it as Hensher Cemetery.
Okay, whatever, I'm sorry.
It's what we call it.
Yeah.
And we looked about trying to, it's briefly, a little pipe in, you can follow that. Three, you're not full pipe, large pipe, something marking the map, they get sideways in that bridge, and passing on this side, then towards the other.
That's the type of construction there, and they all consider car bridges.
For the length of construction.
Yeah, well, that's.
No. On the, on the lease of the bridge, in reference to Pogie One, Pogie Two, the ones that we leased up there, more responsible for the damage. Are we, we same thing on me?
A lot of difference is we're just leasing them, I think, when we lease their.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes. Literally left my heart. Shan, I think you already said, but these are rated for fire trucks, everything heavy that needs.
Exactly, same thing we got at Mills.
Um.
Fire trucks, electric, stuff for it.
Okay, and then, um, the land that the temporary bridge we put on, do we have permission from that property owner now?
Yeah, Dawson's. We got it on both sides.
Okay.
So, that's free.
Any other discussion? And that's all. Thank you, motion passed.
Thank you.
Good job, Steve. Steve, you done a great deal.
What a guy.
Well, we can just.
Thank you, your report.
Okay, as far as the general, we got, we still done the legal cases each month in Chancery Court, three-day basis, filed this past month, had five separate hearings this past month, two contempt orders issuing attachments for the rest of those who aren't in compliance, one case was finally dismissed for compliance. Progressing as anticipated, but there's nothing really new to the report as developments on that. Other than that, my written report will reflect everything from last month, and I'll answer anybody's questions that ask more.
So, any questions? Commissioner Frager?
Regarding the email that came in this afternoon, did you have the opportunity to review that email?
I saw the email, I haven't spoken with all parties that I need to speak to yet. The general advice would be there is no comment, and it'll be handled, you know, pursuant to our normal policies and procedures through the planning office.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, can you share comments?
I do have a couple of things I'd like to mention. Twixie Trail is all about tourism, and some locals that, that travel the trail. I did a, a survey among, of mine. I had a response, whether they spend the money on a trail or not. I had almost fifty responses, and I had two yeses, the rest were no. Do we listen to our constituents, or do we just push it on them? That's my comment about that. So, the Twixie Trail grant, the grant, the grant had come in on six point three million, it has grown and gained five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars of interest. So, that's added to that. Those responses I got was from Roan Mountain, Elizabeth, and Hampton Hill, Mel's Pogie. Frank, it's a pretty good round of numbers, and people responded to it with a resounding no. They don't spend that kind of money on foot trail. You know, it's about tourism, as we, as I said, tourism brings in several million dollars. Now, tourism numbers, though I understand, is all estimates. They get most of their estimates from credit card use, for people that travel in this county, and for Airbnb, and hotel motel receipts. So, they're all estimates of how much money actually comes into this county, how many sale, how much sales tax that tourism brings into this county. So, my question is, with all these just estimates, maybe these people that are here are construction workers, they're not tourists. They use their credit card receipts, they use their motel receipts to gain all of this data that they put together. A lot of it is construction people, especially the last year, staying here in this county and spending money in this county. So, with that being said, where's our industry? I have had many people ask me, where is industry in this county? You know, it's been a hundred years since this county had a substantial employer, which was Benburg, an RCS, and they had employed at one time forty-five hundred people. We have never had an industry since then, in a hundred years, happened in nineteen twenty-six. So, we, we see this happening, and there are seven manufacturing companies in this county that employ sixteen hundred people. Seven companies. Snap-on being one of the leaders, and McDonald being one of the leaders. In this county, there's, we're a service organ, we're a service community, we're not a manufacturing community anymore, we're service. According to what I could find in research, two thousand eight hundred and twelve manufacturing employees, there is six thousand eight hundred and seventy-one service employees. Three thousand seven hundred and sixty-two of those are in the healthcare and social assistance. Rest of them are retail trade. Our county government has two hundred, roughly two hundred employees, and the city has about that many. Our school system has eight hundred and forty-two employees, and the county school system has anywhere from four hundred and forty to five hundred employees. Well, a great number of people in this county work for the government. So, in, we see that all of this combined, where is our jobs? Tourism supports three hundred and sixty-five jobs, I believe. Do they create any, or they just support those jobs with retail and sales tax and that sort of thing, and selling the retail goods? Snap-on Tools expanded twenty twenty-four, forty-four million dollar expansion. Last new business we had come into manufacturing, it was a sawmill, it's called New River, Hardwoods. In twenty eighteen, they invested three point eight million dollars in their sawmill. They don't employ twenty-five new jobs. Snap-on Tools employ anywhere from four hundred to five hundred employees. Car Building, a hundred and sixty employees. Color Works, a hundred employees, Blue Ridge Fabricators, thirty-eight. AY McDonald, seven hundred, and Rice Green Company, a hundred employees. In the community I live, within two miles of where I live, there is twenty-eight people that do not work in Carter County. They work in Johnson County, or they work in Avery County, or in Watauga County, North Carolina. They don't work in, in Carter County. They spend their money in Johnson County, they spend their money in Boone. When I shop, most of the time I go to Boone, and I spend my money there. But not having manufacturing, which is the highest paid, service jobs are like top fourteen dollars an hour average, manufacturing in this county is about twenty-one dollars an hour. So, what do we see? Tourism supports, and the money comes in, what is our, we got, we got a great technical school, we got high, we got high school technology, technology classes. Where does these people going to get a job when they graduate? My son was a welder, he had to leave Carter County, find a good paying job, which he got in Chattanooga. We're losing our young people to other counties, another manufacturer. I yield my time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I have a few, I think I saw, he's, and I asked a question in Roan Mountain, Roan Mountain, let's talk Roan Mountain, I asked it of the residents of Roan Mountain, and it's overwhelmingly no. They don't want to spend that money on a trail. Not because it's not going to bring me anything, because it is going to bring some, but not very much. I sat on a trail two years ago, for seven days, different times in the day, covered all hours from daylight to dark. I saw, on average, eleven point seven bikers. I saw, on average, ten point nine walkers. I saw seven homeless people, one sleeping right next to the trail at Benburg Station. I watched and saw people walk their dogs off the trail on the people's lawns to use the bathroom and not pick it up. I don't think it's going to be good to extend it. Number one, the cost of extending it, I don't think that trail will pay for itself within a hundred years. And who's going to pick up the maintenance cost on it? The taxpayers of this county. We're going to have to pay for increased police presence for it, we're going to have to pay for increased EMS presence on it, we're going to have to continue to pay even after the grants run out, if we're giving up grants to build it. I don't think this is a good investment. I yield.
Any other discussion?
Um, I just, where, Avery, where, was he, were you talking about the Twixie that you saw for this stuff?
Yes.
Where were you?
I was sitting at Benburg Station, in front of Taco Bill, in twenty-three, in September. I was sitting at Bemburgh Station in front of Taco Bill in twenty three, in September twenty three.
Have you been on there lately?
I haven't seen as many people on there lately as I saw on there then when I passed by it all.
But there's none of that other stuff on there now.
There isn't? Have you been down State Line Road?
I, I've walked, run, or ride that trail at least twice a week.
Most of the homeless I saw were on State Line Road on the trail. Three I saw right there at Bemburgh Station. One on a bicycle, knew he was on, homeless, he had everything he owned in a milk crate tied in the back of that bicycle. One sleeping right there by the trail was between the wall and the trail at the high school. We do have a problem with the homeless on that trail.
Sir, any other discussion? Okay, Commissioner Frazier?
Just one thing for the numbers on employment, unemployment, where people are employed, tax structure, all of that fun stuff that goes on regarding economic development in the county. It can be found at t n e c d dot com forward slash county dash profiles. It goes in, lists the total labor force, Carter's labor force, employment, unemployment, unemployment rate. Goes in, breaks it down by industry for the number of people that are employed, the number of establishments, the annual wages at those. There are, it continues on and gives you weak occupations like forging machine centers, operators. Goes down to key clusters, breaks it down by automotive, business services, chemicals, distribution logistics. Goes down, lists the top employers with Carter County School being the top with about eight hundred and seventy. City Schools with five hundred, Snap-on four twenty seven. On down, on down the list, one of the ones that Mr. Cable missed was Borla Performance Industries out in far end of West Carter County and on the other side of South Roan. That is actually part of Carter County and still managed by the Industrial Development Board up until twenty twenty seven. Covers transportation, logistics, education, covers a full gamut of everything that he's referring to. The tourism numbers can be found on the tourism website. I didn't have time to pull it up. I was looking at just the ECD site, but there's an individual report that is supposed to be updated for the recent year in March, is whatever the next one should come out for that.
One of the things that, and I know what you're saying is true as far as the employment. And the question is, what happened to industry? I don't know. I haven't lived here all my life like some of you have.
We're going to take it. Absolutely.
But what I will say is how do you bring industry in? I just heard Friday, I was talking to our registrar deeds. Of course, we know that Nashville became this incredibly fast growing city and now Knoxville is the number one fast growing city. We know people are coming here to Tennessee for lots of good reasons. But when the industry looks at an area to bring in a plant, they don't just look at the tax base and the land, which unfortunately we don't have a lot of, but they look at the amenities of the community. Do we have an airport? Do we have a good healthcare system? Do we have parks, a theater, bike trails? It's a total package. And I know that some of you may not care about the Tweety Trail. How many of you have actually been on it? Can I have a show of hands? Okay, that's better than I thought. How many of you have been on it more than once? Okay. There are people in this community who use that trail a lot. I just want you to know, there is a contingency of folks out there who really want the extension. Now, with that said, this money needs to be used. Is it the best use of state money? That decision has already been made. It has been given to us to use for this trail. We have two options. Use it, send it back with the interest and the money spent for the consultants. That's where we are, folks. And we're not. I said this in my letter to the editor. There were many, not many, but there were some people along the trail in Johnson City who weren't happy. But now they're on the trail. They really like having the trail there. I know one of them was a friend of mine at Milligan and he and his wife are on the trail all the time now and they're very glad it's there. So. I yield.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yeah, just, just some different points about that too. Been on the trail numerous times to check things out in different parts, not only in one. I quit taking the kids with me on the trail to check it out because on the far end by the baseball area, the ball field on that end, huge amount of homeless individuals, not just on the trail, but they will be on the sides and in the woods and on property right next to it. They're not as you come through. The other issue I have with kids and moms with strollers or small children is if they are using it for the right thing and say they're on there with a bike and then you don't even hear anything coming and then all of a sudden, no matter what you say, they ain't dinging their bells for these bikes. And if you don't jerk your child quick enough, you got about twenty bikes speeding at a high rate of speed and then those little kids are there running out in front of it because I had to even holler at another family who did not see them coming. But I will tell you on a personal note that I know for sure or fact, the homeless is coming through because I've worked with them. And it's how they get back and forth. Another day, most of the places that are in Johnson City do not allow the people to stay at the homeless shelters during the day. They have to check out. So they do filter it. That is their way to be. And then some go back and some don't. And that's not the only reason, but I'm just telling you. For a fact, I have seen an uptick in this in the twenty, it'll be twenty six years in February of helping the people of this community. And I, whether I want to shoot her or coat it, I don't want to be a downer. And that tunnel, I've heard so many drug stories and so many things about the tunnel in Hampton and then putting people on the highway with the Tweety Trail. The man couldn't answer my question that night. That I, you know, oh, I'll tell you at a public meeting, this was a commissioner's meeting and he could not tell me how many feet off of there it was going to be from the four lane for people to walk right beside the road where fast moving cars are going with children and families. And then in addition to all of that, properties are a hopscotch. It's going to be a hopscotch game when you can start piecing together this trail and that means sometimes these properties, we're going to have to look at buying them to start with to even get it. And if somebody asked me, if I wanted an open public trail through my backyard with my family? No, that would be a big no because you don't know what you're getting. How, what would your answer be right now? If someone came to you and said, do you mind if we put in a public trail in your backyard and just let anybody you want to walk by? Think of what we're asking our citizens in this. Think of the safety. This is not. Years and years ago, guys, the world has totally changed in what you find, what you do, who's coming in, who can you trust? But all I can say is you want to say people want it. The ones that I've seen at this meeting that wants it, anytime we're having these meetings, just like the last meeting, it was discussed, they're from Johnson City, they ride bikes. They're from out of town and they ride bikes. I don't know how much shopping you can put on the back of your bicycle. And I know you're not at a motel because the two that we have are full of homeless people because I usually can't even get an open spot. And I can tell you your nightly rate, your weekly rate or your monthly rate if you'd like to know what that is. And if you really want to know, most of them have extra creatures crawling around and I usually have to move them to Johnson City just because they're that filthy. And not everybody is going to think to call a, a, an Airbnb to come to town. So that is just the absolutely transparent truth of it. Is this is creating havoc for some of us that do run every day a nonprofit. I don't have security. I don't have all of the extra money in the world and no matter how many that comes in, you just say, oh, just call up an organization, feed them for free. One, one load of food last week due to the shutdown, about six pallets, not even full of food, was three thousand and thirty five dollars that we purchased from the sharing feed from Seca Harvest. Like loads of fishes, just like arms, everything we get is not free. So the more you drag in here, just remember, you build and they shall come. Go look at Johnson City. Go look downtown. See, if you would want your family to go downtown Johnson City, you can't even walk around the churches and everything there. Is everyone of them horrible? Is everyone a mass killers duck? But are they hanging out as homeless around? And if you have family, children, daughters, do you want them, do you want this? Which right now, you feel comfortable with your fourteen or seventeen year old, would you feel comfortable with him walking alone on the Tweety Trail? Because for one, our sheriff's department's got things to do then to monitor who's decided to go ride a bike or go walking on a trail. So that is my point. It's not safe out here. It's one thing downtown under the lights and the angles and you can kind of see, but when you get out on these back roads and you're saying, oh, we need this for tourism. Well, if it's going to be for a bike, it needs to say for a bike. If it's going to be for walking, it needs to say for walking. Somebody's going to get really bad hurt with this, how fast those bikes when they are there. And they're unsure when they're supposed to stop or we're going to stop at all of these sites like down near Snap-on and things, they'll just keep going right on through and there's a car behind you. There's just a lot of issues of safety that I see is a problem. And money.
Okay, so anybody that's not spoke here would like to see. Mr. Frazier?
I know you said, oh, no, not him, right? No, I would just want to bring something out that, that we heard at the, by a meeting between the budget committee and the city council and the city manager and that whole group. This was brought up and this was discussed. I, I know we've all heard that Elizabethan owns their money so they can hurry up and work on the pump trails and all that. And that's what I think all of us mostly thought until we sat down with the council and actually talked to them and they just, anybody who was there remembers, they just flat out said, it's not even on our list. This is our list, it's not on it. So they're not chomping at the bit to get at that right now. And that's supposed to be a big part of it. That, that does concern me.
I yield. Okay, Commissioner Frazier?
Yeah, all I wanted to just remind everybody was is the, the grant was specifically to construct the bridge and install the amenities at Hampton Watershed. And then whatever's left over goes to master planning for the entire trail.
No.
Were you in the room whenever the grant was asked for?
You need to read the grant. You're one of the culprits. You and Mayor Nimmwood, that is the one that represented this. Total project for five point, what, three million? And came back here in the first week and we said, your bridge costs four million, so how are you going to do the rest of it? Oh, we can do it. And that's why this commission voted for the financial management, to write a contract, split it to where the commission approved it. They had to file a design on it. You go with it. When they came in with the estimate, it came in in excess of eighteen million dollars. Not only that, manipulated as far as what your AE firm performed, put it in eight sections. You can take any one section of that, you don't have enough money for one. Where's the rest of it? Now, Carolyn, if you would, financial director, send him a copy of the contract. It's in English and there's some of the words in more than eight letters. Ma'am, thank you.
Before I was rudely interrupted.
No, you wasn't, you're just stupid.
Commissioner Johnson. That is.
Listen here, you bald headed.
Okay. Gentlemen, gentlemen. Gentlemen. Commissioner Frazier, please.
How do your lies?
Gentlemen.
You're the biggest liar.
Commissioner Frazier to Commissioner Johnson. Do you all need to leave the meeting?
No, ma'am, forced. I can play back to the original vote that came up on this. The grant is specifically for three items. To install the Hampton Watershed trail amenities, the bridge, and then plan, do master planning for the remainder of the trail and develop a park, develop a park where the county owns around the O'Brien Forge. That's it. Master planning for the rest of it, the vast majority of it is going to be a T doc project and we knew it from the start because it involves nineteen E. And the state has a, the state has a built in requirement, whatever they modify roads or change roads, that they have to install a bike lane everywhere. That's why those silly little piece of road that's there beside McDonald's has a bike lane on it. We're not expecting the seven million dollars to pay for the entire project from Hampton all the way to Valley Forge and all the way to Snap-on. That's not what it's for. It was there to have the funds available to do the bridge, install the stuff to Hampton Watershed and master plan the rest of it. It's not to build the entire project. The entire project, we knew was going to be around twenty million dollars when we started four years ago. But that's not what that seven million dollars was to do. Getting the bridge, saving the forge, saving some of our history, the most important things that are around here. The history that is here. The forge.
Okay, I think we hashed this long enough. Is there any commission meeting comments not about the Tweety Trail? That needs to be brought up or addressed this time. Okay, I have a question. If the money goes back, are we liable for the interest?
Yes.
I'll go back and review the contract before I'm specific, specifically, but yes, I would.
Well, I believe all the interest has to be used for trail development maintenance.
Yes, it does.
So either you send it all back or you use it all.
Okay, that's, that was.
Yeah, I just don't know if we can deduct what we've already spent on the master plan or though I'd have to go back and look at the details on the contract unless you know.
I mean, that has been spent, my, my position would be that has been spent toward trail development. So I hope not, but again, that's.
I'm fine. I don't know if they would like email, but I would like email back over that. Okay.
Amen.
If we can conduct ourselves better than we have, then some of us might need to reclaim our position. And I'll make it at that. Couple of people, couple of housekeeping problems that we brought to my attention is making sure your. Is making sure your sheets are turned in, signed for your committee meetings.
If you're not going to be at your committee, it is your responsibility to call the chairperson, email them, text them something to let them know. And it's also your responsibility to call your, to have them sit in for you. Please do that. I ask to send that message once again.
Yes.
Just something to any chairs out there on your committees. After you have your meeting, do you care over to try, trying to get back into the habit of doing this? It kind of changed over the last few years. But do you care to go ahead and get to me what came through your committee? It's going to have to be an action item for budget, that you have to be on budgets. If you don't care to do that, I would probably appreciate that. That way, it saves them having to run everybody down. I didn't realize how long that took until I did it last week, and it took most of the day. If y'all don't care to do that, I'd really appreciate it.
You got to pay for it.
Whenever you get finished. Go ahead, you're not finished.
I was just going to thank you all for supporting the UT Extension Building personally. I really appreciate it. I know they've needed a building for quite some time now. But I think it's going to be a, a good thing, once it goes through, if everyone's appraisal comes back. And I would suggest all of you to come in and sit on ag meetings and listen to what all of you is doing for us. Really, it really rewarding where this county's going. Thank you all again.
I'm here never this pretty. Thank you, Matt, Chair.